Men and women here today, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Nugent.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. And I'd like to, of course, acknowledge the folks in the box and thank you for your service and also our colleagues. I believe Alderman Tallyferro is a veteran, Alderman Viegas, Alderman Conway, you're still active, thank you. This is a really special year. It marks the 70th anniversary of the armistice of the Korean War. And close to home for me, in the 39th Ward, I would like to give a big shout out to our Mayfair Veterans Committee. This year on Sunday, we'll be hosting our 22nd Annual Salute to American Harrows event. And this is where we -- it was originally created after 9/11. And what this committee does is it recognizes local veterans, first responders, and leaders in education for their service in our community and to each other and to our city and country. So, thank you to my colleagues who have served, continue to serve. Thank you to the folks in the box and thanks to my 39th Ward Veterans Committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Good morning to everyone here today for this resolution. I rise in support of this resolution and in support of our veterans. And I would also like to take a moment to acknowledge, we have guests who are in the gallery as well, Grant Jacobson of the US Army and the Vet -- as well as from -- surprise, and Department of Veterans Affairs, Rogelio Vila was mentioned, Kevin Kahas, our very own Kevin Barces of the Chicago Department of Veterans Affairs, and Eden Puente, and I believe Mr. Kim, the Service Dog. So, I wanted to take a moment to just recognize their presence here as well because it is important, ladies and gentlemen, that we just don't write words on a piece of paper. This is nice, but actions are nicer. We talk about helping veterans and we have made some progress in creating opportunities for veterans to access city -- the city's jobs, contracts, and opportunities. But we know that we have a lot of work to go. And I suggest that we look in all of our own offices and see just how much we're living up to that value. Are we hiring veterans to be on our staffs? Are we hiring veterans to work for the city of Chicago specifically? Not just to hand out for a voucher, but giving them a job to continue moving forward. I've had the great honor of having two veterans work for me over the last eight and a half years, and I can tell you that there's no better hire than a United States veteran. I know that we talk about homelessness and we talk about what we can do to help end veteran homelessness in particular, how we support veterans. Well, we have a great resource here in the city of Chicago with the Department of Veterans Affairs, the Chicago VA, who I believe would be more than happy to work with every single one of you in this room to connect veterans in your communities with the resources that are owed to them, like housing, like support, like medical, like assistance in their homes for caregiving, like education, like all of the other things that are available to every veteran that they simply don't know where to go. I know that they'd be willing to come because they've been coming to my office for nearly three months now. They set up shop and by word of mouth from our own veterans, the veterans come in and they have one-on-ones and they get to talk with a human being about what their needs are and how the VA can help them with what is owed for their service. Forgive me with my back to you. That is a wonderful opportunity that is open to you all. The challenge is, how many of you are going to open your doors to them? I would love to see, one year hence, all 50 of us stand up and say, "We opened our doors to the Veterans Affairs so that veterans could come in freely and leave with more than they walked in with." Last week, I had a gentleman come to my office who was in his late 60s. A veteran, decades removed from service. A veteran who had health issues, a veteran who had housing issues, and a veteran up until last week had never been connected with the VA. Imagine how much better his life would have been if we had connected him decades earlier with what was owed to him for his service. That is what Veterans Day needs to mean for each and every one of us here. Opening your doors and helping those who need the help with what is available to them right now. The federal government commits hundreds of millions of dollars to helping its veterans, but yet still struggles to connect them. I think it's about 40% connectivity, veterans to the VA. We can be a part of raising those numbers, of connecting those services, and helping those that we just said today have sacrificed so much for all of us. What sacrifices is it to us to open a door and give space to the VA to help them, their families, and everyone that they know? So, Mr. President, I challenge the 49 here and the three citywides, including yourself, to make this the year where we open the doors to the veterans community in the city of Chicago, where we truly say we are honored for your service, honored by your service, and humbly ask for you to come into our offices to get the services that you are owed for what you've given up for this country. The greatest country in the world, which so many have chosen not to voluntarily enter into, but you did. And we thank you. And we commit ourselves to being there for you and your families and for all of those who aren't here with us and all of those who still don't know how to get the help or the resources that are owed to them. That should be our challenge. That is how we make this a 50-member Veterans Caucus because they are in every community. They are in Englewood, they are in Austin, they are in Rogers Park, they are in Clearing. No community is without veterans. The question is now, how do we get those services to every community? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for the challenge. For a moment there, I thought you were going to challenge us to a duel. So, thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Knudsen.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise to associate with this resolution and also be added as a cosponsor. I want to echo many things that Alderman Lopez just said and fellow Aldermen have said today and also just sign on as a partner with the legislation that Chairman Viegas mentioned and thank Chairman Viegas, Tallyferro, Conway for their services. Well, a lot of us have veteran stories that we should be really proud and grateful of. My two grandparents met on Navy Pier. My grandma was serving as a wave in the US Navy, Women Accepted for Volunteer Emergency Service, and my grandpa was serving in the Navy, long-term in subs at the time. How this event that they met, it was a USO event, how it's been described to me is a little bit like a mixer before, you know, Tinder or any dating app was a thing. They'd get some military service members together and see if they clicked. That event changed the trajectory of my family and both of their service coming together really helped different family members go to school and ingrained in us just hard work and many of the values that you all work for every single day. So, I want to say again, just use our offices as resources. We all need to do a better job advertising our offices as safe spaces for veterans of all kinds to come in, to be connected to additional resources, to see how we can help. And again, I just want to thank you all for your sacrifice, for being here, and we're all going to continue thanking by working hard for you.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Chico.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in support of this resolution. Thank you to the men and women in the box and all across this country for the work and the work they will continue to do. Thank you. Mr. President, I represent the 10th Ward and I have Arlie de Guadalupe, which I brought up before. In Vietnam, they lost the most young men that any other parish in the country, 12. And I'm so happy to see my ward come together to support them at that time and now. And I am also proud to share with the council that the mural we have across the street from Arlie de Guadalupe, we are working to restore, to give more pride to the community that benefited from these young and in Vietnam. So, thank you, thank you for all you do, and I stand in support.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise as well to be associated with this resolution. I wanted to thank you, not just those in the box, but everyone that's served. We're in incredibly challenging times. I think you all who've been here have seen some of us in this council debate, we've seen people from the box raise their voices as well. It becomes a bit raucous, it becomes a bit contentious. We have a space and opportunity to have these conversations, whether we agree or not, in large part to the sacrifices made by those who have served. Right? There are other places in the world where you cannot have these debates publicly, you cannot have this disagreement, you cannot come to some sort of compromise where it's always conflict. But what you all have done with sacrifice has allowed us to have that space here to hopefully get to a better, more promising future, and I want to thank you for that. Many of you all who are here are survivors who have memories and experiences that we could never imagine, that you carry with you as you come back from serving. And although we take one day to recognize it, it's clearly not enough. I want to thank Alderman Lopez for his comments and his challenge. I think we should find a day as this council or sometime specifically set aside, not just to take a day off, but to have a day on and make sure the veterans know to come to our offices, to be connected with any services that they need. When we think about folks who are out there, yesterday was particularly challenging for me, walking outside of, just walking to City Hall and seeing the snow start to hit and understanding we have people out here that are overnight sleeping, some, many who are veterans that need the services, that need housing, that need mental health support systems and aren't receiving them. So, although it looks really nice to watch the snow first fall, before it hits the ground, you feel the sorrow for the folks that are out there on the street. And so, I want to make sure we do more. I'm glad that this council is moving forward with something like Bring Chicago Home so that there are funding specifically to create the kind of housing, to make sure people aren't homeless out there, that they get the support systems that are necessary because it's a real tragedy and a disgrace and a shame in this country that the folks who fight so hard to make sure we have those freedoms are on any level on the streets. So, I do want to make sure that we make that commitment. I want to thank those members of our council who are veterans, Alderman Viegas, Alderman Tallyferro, Alderman Conway, and ask that you all challenge us daily legislatively to make sure we focus on how we can add those support systems and just overall globally. I just hope we all can contribute to having a world where we don't have to have anybody serve for anything because there isn't need to. So, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I definitely stand in support of this resolution as I added my name to it at the beginning. And first to my colleagues and this council, I want to let you all know the veterans, if I don't tell you enough, I appreciate you. I constantly repeat this story, whether it's Memorial Day or Veterans Day. My dad served in the Vietnam War, and from when I was a child, it was almost like you had to do it and if you didn't, you'd get knocked upside your head. Anytime you see a veteran, think of veteran. And I didn't really get the full meaning of that until I got a little older. And so, it's not just you just walking past and just saying it haphazardly, it's knowing that someone is standing on that wall for you or someone stood on that wall for you because you know that one thing we know and as we see as things that happen throughout the world, freedom isn't free. And so, somebody's paying a price, whether with their life, where people have given the ultimate sacrifice, or with their time away from their families or giving up themselves. And for that, I am grateful for. We can say thank you, but the best thank you you can give is consistently doing things, not just one day. That's why I'm excited that when I first became Alderman and I sat down at our Veterans Building and I sat and asked them what was important to them, the first thing that they said is that we don't feel appreciated, we don't feel like we're a part of the parade and everything that they do downtown, so we want our own parade. And I started the first South Side Memorial Day Parade that we have every year going into our ninth year coming up in May. Also, making sure that consistently around the year, but also especially on Veterans Day, not only do we bring lunch, but we provide resources to them. And so, it's not just saying thank you, it's showing it with the action and everything. And one thing I'm just so excited about, I am seeing more women organizations pop up. Two have come to mind, can't call the names of them, but two that I'm thinking of, one wear purple and I think another one in pink, if I can remember the colors. And so, these organizations are doing great work and they are constantly reaching out and we're here always to support. So, thank you all so much. Stand encouraged and the 17th Ward office is always open. If no one else is taking and listening to you, we will be there. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Yancy.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. I too am honored to rise in support of this ordinance. Today, I think about Milton Olive, who on November 7th, we'd be celebrating his 77th birthday, who gave his life in the ultimate act of valor to save soldiers in Vietnam. Thank you to all of you who served who are in the box, those in this body who have served and those who have served in this body and have served. I'm a nephew of three uncles who were Marines who served in Vietnam and came home with horrible scars, both inside and out. Also had a number of brothers, three brothers and several cousins who served as both soldiers and sailors during times of war and peace. You know, veterans often make the most extreme sacrifices to protect our democracy and our way of life, but often come home to fight for the bare minimum of resources that they deserve for their bravery and their valor. And so, today, you know, I give everything I can in support of veterans in this city and in this country who are doing things that many of us wouldn't even fathom to do. And so, as with that, all for thanks and stand in support of this resolution.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to support this resolution. Today, I stand as a proud family member. The baby of the group is here, the siblings is here who served in the Army, but we have brothers who have served in the Marines and in the, which one? Navy. And not to mention our cousin who is in the Air Force. But our uncle kind of set the tone for us. He served and gave what is the ultimate thing that you can do, give your life for your country, to show us that it's okay to be a leader. He actually was my, in fact, my parents would have been awarded the Medal on his behalf because he actually pushed several members out of the way of the tank and the tank then hit him and ran over him, but he saved the lives of multiple people that were in training that day. So, today, I am grateful for people who serve in our place, who give their life or put their life on the line for us. So, today, Mr. President, I stand here and support it. I am appreciative and not to be redundant, but thank everybody for their service.
Thank you very much. Before we go to our close, which will be Alderman Conway, the last person that I have on the list is Fuentes. Are there any others that wish to speak before Alderman Conway closes? Okay, we will add Laspada and then Alderman Conway will close. The Chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in support of this resolution. I have the great honor to represent the 26th Ward, which also represents veterans of the 65th Infantry Regiment, also known as Borincaniers and All Latino Regiment that served. And before becoming Alderperson, as a policy advocate and as the co-chair of the Puerto Rican Agenda, I also fought really hard to get funding and to build the 65th Infantry Affordable Housing that is also in the 26th Ward. When we acknowledge our veterans and when we celebrate Veterans Day, it's nice to elevate our veterans and to acknowledge those who have served and to remember those who are no longer with us, but it's also a reminder of the work that's ahead of us, that we must continue to dignify, affirm, humanize, and elevate the people that continue to sacrifice, not just their own lives, but their families. We know when people serve, the entire family does. Children grapple with that absence. Spouses worry every day. Parents hope that their children come back home. And so, while we are an acknowledgement of everyone that serves, we also know that we have to provide the wraparound supports and build the infrastructure to serve the entire family. Today, I want to thank everyone in the box for their sacrifice, not just of your own lives, but for time with family, parents, children, nieces and nephews, because you found it to be a privilege and an honor to serve this country. I also want to thank my ward superintendent, Hugo Samaoya Jr., who is also still active. I want to thank an unhoused resident in the 26th Ward who currently lives in a tent in Humboldt Park, Alan, who comes to my office and reminds me every day of the work that we have to do, of how we have to prioritize housing, mental health care, and that that is a fight that we have to fight every day. And that an ordinance like Bring Chicago Home is one step in the right direction to housing our residents, to housing every unhoused neighbor across the city of Chicago, and it is work that we have to be brave enough to fight every day. We must come to council with a moral obligation to do that work the way you all have fought in combat. The bravery that you've shown this country is a bravery that we all must take and that we all must show the city of Chicago. And so, I want to thank you for being here today, for those who have served, for those who are still active. And I want every family member of veterans and active members across the city of Chicago to know that we too stand with you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. One more time, are there any others that wish to speak? Okay, so we will have Alderman Laspada and then Alderman Conway will close. The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Very proud to stand in support of this resolution. I think of my father who served, I think of my father-in-law who served. I think about the comfort and freedom that I experienced, that my daughter experiences that is born on the backs of the sacrifices of so many. Beyond that, what can I say more eloquently or briefly than what Alderman Tallyferro already said? If it is true, and we know that it is, that veterans are disproportionately impacted by homelessness, by mental health crises and trauma, it is our mandate to act on this. I love what the words on this sheet of paper represent, what they mean, but if it doesn't go beyond this, this is literally and figuratively a very cheap and flimsy form of solidarity with you. I'm glad for what we're voting for today. I'm excited for what we will accomplish through the Bring Chicago Home resolution. If we truly mean that we support the mental health and trauma needs of our veterans, this is an exciting budget to have an opportunity to vote for, for the city. And it helps me believe that this is more than just a rhetorical and performative moment to have opportunities to put our money where our mouth is on behalf of yourselves and those who've served along with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And to close, the Chair recognizes our active member, Alderman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I obviously rise in support of this resolution and I was shocked when the Department of Veterans Affairs informed me that I was the first actively drilling reservist in the history of city council. You don't think that a white Catholic guy in Chicago City Council could be the first anything, but here we are. I hesitate to tell this story, but I think it's, because I don't talk about it publicly. But about six years ago, almost to the day, it was my first day in Afghanistan and I was in transient housing and I woke up, I'd been way into the middle of the night, and I had to, I saw about 100 yards across the field, the place you'd get a cup of coffee. And they tell you, walk out to the street, which weirdly enough at Bagram Airfield, it's called Disney Drive, I don't know why that is, probably not called that today. You're supposed to walk out to Disney Drive, walk down the road, and then come back to the green bean coffee area. I instead, in a terrible, almost life-ending decision in fact, said, "I know this airfield better than anybody, I've been watching with a drone for a long time, I know where the Taliban tries to shoot things down, I'm just going to cut along the fence line." So, I get about 30 yards across this 100-yard field and all of a sudden, the IDF alarm, the indirect fire, the mortar alarm essentially, which sounds exactly like the iPhone ringing, it starts going, "Er, er, er, incoming, incoming, incoming." And I remember I hit the deck and it was scary. And I looked up and I saw about 50 yards away, there was an old Soviet bunker and I started sort of trying to walk like, you know, crawl like this. And I wasn't getting very far, very fast, and I got up and I started, started crouch running into the bunker and fortunately made it. And fortunately, I know, and I know that is nothing compared to what many of our veterans did have gone through. I went through that one time. I can assure you that one time is all you need. But we have many, many veterans out there who went through that repeatedly, dozens of times, in closer calls than I had. And I think it's that repeated trauma that is the reason that we lose 22 veterans a day to suicide. And, you know, also a lot of traumatic shared experience and many of us veterans being put in an environment where we all come from different backgrounds and different values, we have different bosses, and the fact that we have been through that situation where failure to complete the mission is not an option. And I think that's why veterans share such a strong bond, even if they didn't serve together. You know, we look, when we look at the US Congress today, back in the 60s, 70s, and 80s, you know, there was about 70% veterans in Congress. And back then, you had a lot less partisanship, a lot more bills got passed. Today, the number of veterans in Congress is less than 20% and obviously see much more partisanship and much less bills getting passed, right? You're seeing a lot of failure to complete the mission. And fortunately, we all get along better here in this chamber. So, I mean, I'd just like to say that I am proud to be a member of the Veterans Caucus with Chairman Viegas and Chairman Tallyferro. I'd also like to acknowledge our Sergeant-at-Arms, Alvin Stark, who's a Navy veteran, excuse me, Army veteran as well. And I want to thank all of, all my fellow veterans in the box today for representing all of us today and thank all of you for your kind remarks and Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank you for your support of the Department of Veterans Affairs in this city. And I thank you all for your support of veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. So, with that, we'd like to acknowledge the members who are with us today. Thomas Lozada, Frank Gutierrez, Major Karen Hernandez, Victor Sarmiento, CJ Cisat, Charles Henderson, De Marique Palasek, Jeremy Norris, James Terry Blue Senior, Lourdes Fernando, Denise Montoya, Major Judith Bell, Grant Jacobson. But also like to speak to this resolution. On Veterans Day, we come together as a nation to thank and honor and remember those who have served our country in every branch of the armed forces. During times of war and times of peace, the brave men and women of the armed forces have shown extraordinary dedication and loyalty to our nation. They make enormous sacrifices and contributions to maintain our freedom and defend our way of life. For that, every November 11th, we recognize all veterans and salute them for their exemplary service. In Chicago, we especially acknowledge the over 65,000 Chicagoans who have served in the United States Armed Forces. And throughout our history, brave men and women from our city have served with honor and distinction in conflicts around the world, from the trenches of World War I to the deserts in Iraq and Afghanistan. The courage displayed by Chicago's veterans and the resilience they have demonstrated cannot be overstated. To truly honor our veterans, we not only recognize Veterans Day, but we must pledge to do right by our veteran community. Brothers and sisters from the armed forces oftentimes come home and struggle to transition to civilian life. They face hurdles both visible and invisible. We must demonstrate our immense gratitude by extending support and embracing our veteran community. Let's also make sure that we work in partnership. Let's also make sure that we work in partnership with our notable veteran organizations, and let us ensure that the Chicagoans who serve are welcomed back into our city and society with open arms and are and able to use their skills and experiences to embark upon the next chapter of their life. It is the least we can do as a city to thank our veterans, to all of our veterans, and especially those from Chicago, who have our deep appreciation, respect and gratitude today and every day. Thank you for your remarkable contributions, and with that, I would respectfully ask Alderman Mitchell, can we get a motion to pass both of these resolutions?
Mr. President, I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The resolutions for both Veterans Day as well as, as well as the Native American Heritage Month, both of those have passed. Thank you very much. part of the, the work that we do in the city who are also veterans. I would ask for leave for individuals to be able to join us on the floor to take the picture. Do I have leave from this body?
Yes.
All right, leave is granted. Alderman Mitchell?
Mr. President, I move that we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Communications?
Communications from his honor, the mayor, to the honorable, the city council of City Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Housing, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for the United Yards 1A Affordable Housing Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education to provide TIF funds for improvements at Kenwood Academy High School. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Chicago Board of Education, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the provision of fee waivers to the Chicago Board of Education. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of redevelopment agreement with Rebuild Foundation NFP to provide neighborhood opportunity funds for the St. Lawrence Arts Incubator Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinances, or ordinances authorizing the budgets and execution of service agreements with service providers for various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Family and Sports Services, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the flexible housing pool program. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for the Lakeview Landing Affordable Housing Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Assets, Information and Services, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of amended lease agreement with North LaSalle Financial Associates LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Assets, Information and Services, I transmit herewith, herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of an easement agreement with 3305 Longdale Development LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Department of Business Affairs and Civil Protection, together with Alderman Ramirez-Rosa, Burnett and Martin, I transmit herewith an ordinance amending Section 17-5-0207 Municipal Code Regarding Outdoor Patio Dining. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Department of Planning and Development, together with Alderman Ramirez-Rosa and Laspada, I transmit herewith an ordinance adding 17-13-0303-D Municipal Code Regarding Type 1 Applications. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Sierra Boatwright as Commissioner of Planning and Development, effective on November 20, 2023. Passage occurs on before that date, otherwise effective upon passage. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I appointed Sierra Boatwright as a member of the Community Development Commission for a term beginning on November 20, 2023. If passage occurs on or before date, otherwise beginning upon the date of passage and expiring February 26, 2027, to complete the unexpired term of Maurice D. Cox, who has resigned, your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith appointments to the Advisory Council on Women. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Health and Human Relations. I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council the following documents filed in my office: Determination Certificate of City Comptroller Concerning Second Lean Water Revenue Bond Series 2023-C and Refunding Series 2023-P. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council's Special Meeting held on October 11, 2023, required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers or published in pamphlet form on November 1, 2023, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal Proceedings of City Council, City, Chicago. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council, the regular meeting held on October 11, 2023, required to state statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers or published in pamphlet form on November 1, 2023, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal Proceedings of City Council, City, Chicago. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council that a resolution related actions which were considered by the City Council, the Special Meeting held on October 13, 2023, which required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers or published in pamphlet form on November 1, 2023, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal Proceedings of City Council, City, Chicago. I City Clerk Anna Valencia also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council, the regular meeting held on October 16, 2023, which required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers or published in pamphlet form or November 1, 2023, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal Proceedings of City Council, City, Chicago. I City Clerk also inform the City Council the following ordinance which were passed by the City Council on October 4, 2022, for requests to be published in special pamphlet forms or published in special form on November 1, 2023. In position, in position of tax levy approval of the year 2024 budget and execution of service provider agreement of special service number, number 1-2016. In position of a tax levy approval of the year 2024 budget and execution of service provider agreement, agreement for special area, service area number 20. In position of tax levy approval of the year 2024 budget and execution of service provider agreement for special service area number 21-2016. In position, in position of tax levy approval of the year 2024 budget and execution of service provider agreement for special service area number 55. In position of a tax levy approval of the year 2024 budget amendment of the year 2023 service provider agreement, no execution of a service provider agreement for special service number, area number 75. In position of a tax levy approval of the year 2024 budget, execution of service provider agreement on special service area number 79. I City Clerk Valencia also transmitt here with the following miscellaneous communications or reports requiring City Council action, zoning classifications of particular areas referred to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, claims against the City of Chicago, which referred to Committee on Finance. Your honor, that concludes the reports and communications with the mayor and other city officers.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Committee reports, chair recognizes the finance chair, Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the City Council, reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which held a committee meeting on October 31, 2023, the following items received a due-pass recommendation from the committee. Item number one is an ordinance concerning an amendment for the Imani Village Senior Residence Development at 9621 South Cottage Grove Avenue that revises the HUD loan term and interest rate. This project is located in the 8th Ward. Mr. President, unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move for a passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Seeing no hands, members, please use the e-vote application to record your vote
The roll call is now open, or sorry, the voting is now open, the voting is now open. I will now call for anyone for a voice vote if you had not used your e-device. Alderman Curtis.
Present.
Alderman Curtis is a, is a yes?
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is a, is a yes? Alderwoman Taylor? Alderwoman Taylor? I'll come back to you. Alderman Burnett?
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is a yes? Alderwoman Silverstein?
Yes.
Alderwoman Silverstein is a yes? Alderwoman Taylor, just coming back to you if you're there? Okay. Alderwoman Taylor not present at the moment? All right, the voting is now closed.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. There are 49 yays and zero nays. This matter is passed. Alderman Mitchell?
Mr. President, move to reconsider vote?
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. This motion fails. Very much. Thank you. Please continue, Chair Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number two is an ordinance concerning the execution of an ownership transfer agreement to East Lake Darul LLC regarding Darul Aman Senior Apartments at 4814 through 4820 North Kedzie Avenue in the 33rd Ward. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Item number three is an ordinance concerning the issuance of financial assistance to Austin United Alliance LP for the Austin United Alliance Residential Project at 5206 through 5224 West Chicago Avenue in the 37th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Item number four is an ordinance concerning the execution of a revised redevelopment agreement with Celadon Construction Corporation entities, Blackwood Development Partners LLC, and United Yards 1B entities for the property at 4700 South Ashland Avenue and 4707 South Marshville Avenue in the 20th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number five is an ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for the provision of tax increment financing funds for the improvements at Clemente Community Academy High School at 1147 Northwestern Avenue in the 1st Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number six is the ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for the provision of tax increment financing funds for improvements at Von Steuben Metropolitan Science High School at 5039 North Kimball Avenue in the 39th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number seven is an ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for the provision of tax increment financing funds for improvements at Molleton Elementary School at 4415 South Dart, South King Drive in the amount of 2.9 million in the 3rd Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number eight is an ordinance concerning the Third Amendment to the 24th and Michigan Tax Increment Finance Program Redevelopment Plan and Project in the 3rd, 4th and 11th Wards. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number nine is an ordinance concerning the Second Amendment to the 111th and Kedzie Avenue Business District Redevelopment Plan and Project in the 19th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 10 is an ordinance concerning the Second Amendment to the Clark-Montrose Tax Increment Finance Redevelopment Plan and Project in the 40th, 46th and 47th Wards. Alderman Matt Martin of the 47th Ward has invoked Rule 14 during the committee meeting.
Chair recognizes Alderman Martin.
Thank you. My wife works for a fundraising consulting firm that several years ago did work on behalf of Black Ensemble Theater, which was one of a number of entities that's been advocating for the extension of that TIF. That work concluded over a year ago. She herself never worked on that project, but out of an abundance of caution, I'll be invoking Rule 14 for this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move passage of this item by the same motion with the exception of Alderman Martin, who recuses himself from this vote.
Very well. No other objection, no objections, no hands, so ordered.
Item number 11 is an ordinance concerning the Second Amendment to the Galewood Armitage Industrial Tax Increment Finance Program Redevelopment Plan and Project in the 29th, 36th and 37th Wards. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 12 is an ordinance concerning the Fourth Amendment to the Woodlawn Tax Increment Finance Redevelopment Plan and Project in the 5th and 20th Wards. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items number 13 and 14 consist of orders of authorization for the payment of various small claims against the city of Chicago and denial of payments of various small claims against the city of Chicago. If there are no objections, I move that these items be placed for passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 15 is an order- Item 15 is an order authorizing two applications for the city of Chicago charitable solicitation Tag Day permits for the Ronald McDonald House Charities of Chicagoland and Northwest Indiana and the Planned Parenthood Federation of America, Inc. If there are no objections, I move that these items be placed in the omnibus.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item 16 is the report of cases in which verdicts, judgments, or settlements were entered into for the month of September 2023. This will be placed on file with the clerk. Item number 17.
So moved.
Thank you. Item number 17A is an order authorizing the Corp Counsel to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Brent G. Hampton Jr. as administrator of the estate of Michelle Ewing, deceased, and Don Yeka Volker as mother and next friend of Eliana Hampton Volker versus the city of Chicago cited as 2019 L. 2879 in the amount of $200,000. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider with the exception of Alderman Quinn, who wishes to be recorded as voting no.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report from the Committee on Finance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next committee is Committee on Aviation. The Chair recognizes Chairman O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Aviation, which held a meeting on Monday, October 30th, 2023. Committee had two items recommended for passage. Item number one, a substitute ordinance, an extension and amendment of concessionaire COVID-19 Economic Relief Agreement at Chicago's O'Hare International Airport and Midway International Airport. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and an associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two, an ordinance, the Second Amendment to License Agreement with Chicago Concourse Development Group for Wireless Communication Access System and Services at Chicago O'Hare International Airport and Midway International Airports. I make the same motion if there is no objection, Mr. President.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Taylor, I believe, who wishes to be added to the roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
As a yes, I would imagine?
Yes, Mr. President.
Please add Alderwoman Taylor as a yes. Committee on, Committee on Rules, Committee on Rules. The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Harris.
Reporting for your Committee on Committee on Rules, which met on Tuesday, October 31st, 2023, at 12:30 and again on this morning at 10:00 a.m., and concluded earlier this morning, the Committee makes the following recommendations in a series of reports. The Committee recommends approval of Item 1, a correction of the City Council Journal of Proceedings of September 14th, 2023, ordinance 2023-0005443. A correction of the City Council Journal of Proceedings for September 14th, 2023. I move approval of this recommendation by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. The Committee recommends that Item 2 be re-referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules, R. 2023-0004224, submission of a public question by referendum to the Chicago voters at March 29th, 2024, election proposing to the all voters to determine if Chicago should continue to keep its designation as the sanctuary city of Chicago. Two colleagues have decided to defer and publish this, Alderman Vasquez and Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Chair, thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez. The item will be deferred. You don't wish to speak. The item will be deferred. Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Mr. President, how do you defer and publish something that's not being reported out?
Chairwoman has just reported out and then it was deferred.
But it's being re-refered. It's not being reported out. It's being re-refered.
That's a report.
That's, that's not a report, Mr. Chairman. That is a re-referral. That is not a reporting out of.
Once something is referred out and once something is brought to the body, it's a report. Thank you. Is there anything else?
Could I speak to the issue, Mr. President?
You sure may. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just want to speak to this re-referral. First, Mr. President, I've never in my 24-year, 24 and a half years seen a report that was re-refered from itself. There was a committee report that was sent to rules. Rules Committee reported it out and reported it back to themselves. I've never seen where you send something to yourself in committee. That's just, I've never seen it. And so, I understand that, you know, 26 votes, you can rule and do whatever you want. If you got 26 votes, I get that and I understand it. But I just believe that this is a very, very important subject here in the city of Chicago, that the people, there was a poll done and 77% of the people of the city of Chicago have stated that they would like to have a voice on whether or not we want to remain a sanctuary city. Now, I understand there's a lot of controversy behind it, but let me just say this to my colleagues. There's nothing binding about this referendum. It is just a question to pose to the people, that do they want to continue to spend 30, 40 million dollars a month on migrants when our communities are crumbling every single day? We need police. We need better schools. We need better streets. We need better jobs. We need all kinds of things in our community and we're just taking money and taking it out back and burning it. We're not seeing any fruits of the labor of all the money that's being spent on migrants, ladies and gentlemen. Now, I believe, we need to take care of the people. I get that, but there's a limit to everything. You have Denver sending their migrants to Chicago. You have New York sending their migrants to Chicago and we're saying just keep them coming. Keep them coming. We got endless, you know, resources. We have to draw the line. And let's, all I'm saying is, if the people say we want to continue down this road, so be it. But don't shut the people out from having a voice whether or not they want to continue down this road. This is an important issue. And so, I understand it's being re-refered to the re-refered, to the referred back itself. I get it. But, ladies and gentlemen, we have a special City Council meeting tomorrow. There's going to be one remaining spot on the ballot that needs to be filled. Come, don't shut the people out. Let the people have a voice. Let the people have a voice whether or not they want to continue down this road or not. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Harris.
He recommends that Item 3 be re-refered to the Committee on Environment and Protection and Energy, R. 3023-004577, a resolution calling for hearings of the proposed rake hikes by People's Gas. The Committee recommends that this item be re-refered to the Committee on Environment, Environmental Protection and Energy. I move approval of this recommendation by the same motion if there's no objections.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you. The Committee recommends that Item 4 through 14 be re-refered to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Item 8, 2023-005023, a recommendation of Sarah Miranda to the Advisory Council of New Asians. Item 5, A, 2023-004963, a reappointment of Butch Trustee to the Advisory Council on LGBTQ plus issues. Item 6, A, 2023-004964, a reappointment of Mariah Arnold to the Advisory Council on LGBTQ plus issues. Item 7, A, 2023-004968, a reappointment of Jim Shuhung to Advisory Council on LGBTQ plus issues. Item 8, A, 2023-004973, a recommendation of Cornelius Lee to the Advisory Council on LGBTQ plus issues. Item 9, A, 2023-004974, a reappointment of Pamela Lycie to the Advisory Council on LGBTQ plus issues. Item 10, recommendation, item 10, a reappointment, I'm sorry, of A, 2023-004975 of Donald M. Bell to the Advisory Council on LGBTQ plus issues. Item 11, A, 2023-0049, a zero, reappointment of Stephanie Clark to the Advisory Council on LGBTQ issues. Item 12, A, 2023-0049, a two, a reappointment of Vic Winter to the Advisory Council on LGBTQ issues. Item 13, A, 2023-0049, a three, a reappointment of Siobhan Shea to the Advisory Council on LGBTQ plus issues. Item 14, an appoint, A, 2023-0019, eight for appointment of Christian N. Kazar to the Advisory Council on LGBTQ plus issues. I move approval of the recommendations that Items 14, 4 through 14 be re-refered to the Committee on Health and Human Relations by the same motion if there's no objections.
Hearing none, so ordered.
The Committee recommends that Item 15 be re-ref, be re-refered to the Joint Committee on Health and Human Relations Committee on Education, Child Development, and the Committee on Workforce Development with a simultaneous delegation by Workforce Committee to its Youth Employment Subcommittee. Item 15, 02-023-004216, an amendment of the municipal code by adding the Peacebook Ordinance establishing neighborhood and citywide peace commissions to implement initiatives for peacekeeping activities. I move approval of this, of the recommendation that Item 15 be re-refered to the Joint Committee on Health and Human Relations Committee on Education and Child Development and the Committee on Workforce Development with a simultaneous deleg, delegation by Workforce Committee to its Youth Employment Subcommittee.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. The Committee recommends a re-referral to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate, ordinance 02-023-004225, an ordinance implementing a 30-day advance notice to all the persons when any public or private property in a ward will be designated as a temporary residential shelter for more than 12 individuals. I move approval of this recommendation and Item 16 be re-refered to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
The Committee recommends approval of Item 17, approval of the public question for submission by referendum to the voters for this, for certain new Chicago real estate transfer rates to combat homelessness with services, which services shelters. R. 2023-004166, approval of the public question submission by recommendation to the Chicago voters for the certain new Americans' real estate transfer rates to combat homelessness with service shelters. Alderman, the sponsors, let me get this one right, wish to make a recommendation to DNP item Alderman Ramirez Rosa, Alderman Haddon, and Alderman Martin, which to DNP this item.
Very well.
Item 18 was held.
So ordered.
Thank you. Item 18 was held. The Committee recommends approval of Item 19, submission of the public question by referendum to Chicago voters that.
Did she, excuse me, just for a second, you, the number 17, did you move for the passage?
No, I moved for.
Deferred, right, defer and publish, right? And 18 is held, right? An hour on 19, yes. Yep, very good.
Okay. So the Committee recommends approval of Item 19, the submission of the public question by a referendum to Chicago voters on, at the March 19th election proposing to allow the voters to determine if Chicago shall create flooding mitigation and response plan. This item will be, item number R. 2023-005109 will also be DNP'd by the sponsor Alderman Haddon and Alderman Mitts.
So moved. Thank you very much.
That concludes my report.
The Chair recognizes, thank you, the Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
I think, thank you, Mr. President. During the chairperson's committee report, I was hoping to be recognized before Item 19 was deferred and published. I understand that was going to happen, but just want to speak to it briefly.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, it's, people that have been here for a while know that it's not often Alderman Anthony Beal and I agree. We've been disagreeing for 16 years or more. But I just want to refresh people's memory on what we're doing with these ballot questions. And certainly, the real estate transfer tax is a serious question that the voters will need to answer. But I got to tell you, crowding out a referendum on our sanctuary city status and denying Chicago voters the right to opine on this issue, an issue that was settled many, many years ago, probably before a lot of folks owned their homes here that are voting today, we should hear from the people of Chicago. And I think that, frankly, using a ballot question asking whether or not Chicago shall create a flooding mitigation plan, who's going to vote against that? I mean, why aren't we doing that already, Mr. President? Chicago should already have a flooding mitigation plan. It just seems a shame that we're employing tactics that date back to the old machine days of Daley to push off questions that we believe, I believe, the people of Chicago should be asked and allowed to answer. That's who we all work for here. And it's been a long time since the people of Chicago have been asked their opinion on this issue. And if this, this question were asked and the people were to say, we want to retain our sanctuary city status, well, then we know that. I suspect there's a different sentiment out there. And look, I am sympathetic to the migrant population coming here, too. I want them to be safe. I want the neighborhoods that they're housed in to be safe. We also have finite resources available to us as a city. And we're not getting the kind of support that we need from the federal government. We need that desperately. But to ask taxpayers to continue to, to, to shoulder this burden when we have so many other needs in the city of Chicago right now that we've heard from our constituents about is, 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 I think, a question that needs to be answered by, by the general public. And so, I understand that this item's been deferred and published. I just hope my colleagues recognize that this is a hot-button issue that all of our constituents are talking about. People have varying opinions on it. Let's hear them out. You know, democracy with a small d. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Siccho Lopez. This is not for your committee report, is that correct? Thank you, Alderman Siccho Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been patiently hearing some of the opinions expressed yesterday, and it is clear that we continue to pander for votes in a time where we need to act as elected officials and representatives of our communities. There were a number of inaccurate remarks as of yesterday from some developers who had the audacity to talk about the issues with property taxes in hard-hit communities like ours. Well, let me be very clear with that. As our property taxes in communities like Pilsen have skyrocketed, some of these same developers have received very juicy, very broad tax appeals that now are being paid by the same. that now are being paid by the same communities that are opening the doors, doubling up in basements and coach houses, while we have children in police stations. I find that insulting. I also would like to address some more inaccuracies that again, in the sake of democracy, continue to be spread. The fact that some of these developers talk about being concerned about skyrocketing rents. Well, let me explain maybe a little bit of economics. Monopolies are not good for our economy. They are not good for even the same people who continue to demonize any efforts so that we have equity in our taxes, in our tax structures, in our revenue income. How is this democracy when we're trying to prevent a vital question around homelessness and we hear many people here talking about making sure that investment comes to the hardest hit areas of the city of Chicago? When we talk about the fifteen thousand plus residents on the West Side who've been neglected by the federal government, we speak with the same passion that we speak about making sure that our city continues to invest in housing. The federal government has neglected our city for generations. And yet, we want to make sure that we don't ask directly our constituents about these questions? The times of machine politics, when mayors will come and crowd their questions so that we can even vote on the elected representative school board, cannot be compared to the questions that we see in the ballot. As someone who went to the border, and I encourage other colleagues to go too, people are not going to stop coming because this is a sanctuary title on that. People are coming to the city of Chicago because we have Republican governors who are bossing them in despite of our claims to work with other states in collaboration and the silence of the federal government. So today, what we're talking about is making sure that we invest just as much on the West Side where Alderman Mitts has been vocal about making sure her constituents have access and help for constituents who are devastated by the flood, and they still do, just as much as we're talking about making housing a human right in spite of the destabilization that Republican governors are inflicting in our city. Because there is a convention next year. So I ask my colleagues to stop pandering for votes and start as, acting as elected officials. Look at the data, look at the research, and look at the facts. But what we're not going to do is allow people to demonize efforts that are intended to help South Side, West Side, as much as many other communities across our city. I find troubling for a developer to talk about the inadequacy of the property taxes. Let's talk about equity, so those who can afford it can pay because they're benefiting by property tax appeals that we are paying for. And let's make sure that the voters with the facts can go and vote on what's right for the city of Chicago. But this raising of tensions between communities is unacceptable. And I send the vote for those who claim to be in support of immigrant communities. We know that track record. And I remind my colleagues that the century city status was fought and won by Mayor Harold Washington. So for anybody who votes against this, just to ask the voters, please take out of your vocabulary, Harold Washington. Take it out of your vocabulary. And if we want to act as elected officials, number one thing is to listen to our constituents and the suffering that they're subject to, what the GOP is trying to play games here in their own backyard. So for the sake of democracy, let's ask the voters on what's right, and let's do that on the ballot. But the pandering that I hear this floor and the xenophobic comments must stop in a city like ours that protects the human rights of every resident. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, Committee on Housing and Real Estate, Chairman Sigcho Lopez, I'm sorry, you don't get a break, sir.
We never get a break, but we're happy to talk and work every day for the city of Chicago. Thank you, Mr. President. Our members of the City Council are now reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held an in-person meeting on October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of seven ordinances. These include various agreements and land transactions. The following items from the Department of Assets Information and Services are grouped for convenience. Item number one, SO two, two, zero two three dash zero 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 five oh four two. Pass a substituting committee for the acquisition of property from Alberson's at eleven four one four South Halsted Street by donative agreement, indeed, including the northwest corner of one hundred and fifteenth and Halsted Street in the twenty-first ward. Item number two, zero two zero two three, zero 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 forty nine forty. Extension of intergovernmental lease agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois for General Medical, for General Medical Services and Preventative Care Space at the Lower West Side Neighborhood Clinic at seventeen thirteen South Ashland in the twenty-fifth ward. Item number three, zero two zero two three dash zero 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 four nine four one. Extension of the intergovernmental lease agreement with the Board of Trustees at the University of Illinois for General Medical and Administrative Space at Uptown Neighborhood Clinic, eight four one West Wilson Avenue in the forty-sixth ward. I move passages of these items by the first more favorable roll call, roll call vote of the Committee of Finance and Associated and Successful Motion to reconsider, with the exception of Alderman Moore, Moseley, Dowell, and Scott, who has to be recorded as a no vote on item number one.
Very good. I see a few hands. Gotcha. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, again, members of the City Council. I move to divide the questions separating item one from items two and three.
Chair recognizes Alderman Moseley. So there's a motion to divide these three items, separating item number one. What are you all prefer? All those in favor of separating, separating these two? Okay, we've been asked for a roll call. Madam Clerk? A yes vote means you wish to separate item one from the, from the three. A no, and votes separately. A no vote means you wish to continue to vote all three items at the same time. I've been informed that. Three distinct items, so division is not necessary. We can just go ahead with the vote, so that separately. There doesn't require a roll call or a voice vote at all. We'll just move it separately. Yep, all right. The chair recognizes, so you don't have to withdraw your motion. Thank you very much. So these items will be separated, number one will be separated from number two and three. So what we can do is, we can move forward with two and three, and then we have a list of individuals that wish to speak. I can go back to that. So how about we make our motions for two and three? Yep, so move for the passage of items two and three.
I move then for the passage of item two and three for the most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and Associated and Successful Motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Now for item number one, the chair recognizes Alderman Moseley.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a poem by Dr. Benjamin Elijah Mays called God's Minute. And it says that, "I've only just a minute, only sixty seconds in it. Forced upon me, can't refuse it, did not seek it, did not choose it. Yet it's up to me to use it, I must suffer if I lose it, give account for if I abuse it, just a tiny little minute, yet eternity is in it." And that has been my days lately. I do understand that this is a federal issue, humanitarian crisis that we as a city are trying to solve, and it needs a federal declaration. I do understand that, yes, your administration is committed to making sure that Morgan Park Commons continue, that the tents, the base camps will be down by November twenty twenty-four, allowing us to continue. I do understand that your administration has committed to having a Chicago temporary shelter this winter in the twenty-first ward. And I understand that despite this vote today, it doesn't change if this is coming or not. But I also understand that I cannot change my pledge to my community who have our promise that we will make these decisions together. And it's for that reason, Mr. President, that I ask to be recorded as a no. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Nothing for me to say.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple things come to mind with this sale, because this is not just any other acquisition. What comes to mind when I look at what we're doing in the twenty-first ward over the objections of the local aldermen, by the way, something that should be relevant to each and every one of us, is that we are still a city without a plan. Mr. President, I have said numerous times from here and from home that you inherited this crisis. We have worked to try to address this crisis in my own ward, at Gage Park, even when it was painful, because we had to do what we had to do to get people out of the police stations several months ago, when it was only a hundred and sixty people living in a police station, as opposed to the three thousand that are there now, the six hundred that are at O'Hare Airport's terminals, sleeping on the floors and in cots. It was thirty-three degrees yesterday, and we still have people outside in tents. Now I know we need a plan. Regardless of the politics of sanctuary, the politics of welcoming, the politics of immigration, we have to come up with a plan. The problem is, none of us have heard an articulated plan and how we're going to move forward this month, two months, six months from now, where the funding's going to come to, come through, who's going to pay for it, and who we're going to hold responsible at the federal level. Because we know that the four million people who have crossed the border since last October are being pushed everywhere across this nation and are now reconverging back here, because we are still the only city that says, come on in. We can't say come on in with nowhere to send them. We can't say come on in but sleep in the police stations, sleep in the park districts, sleep in the school basements. We have to come up with a long-term plan to address this. And to be quite frank, Mr. President, we have not done that. We are only hearing of the results of the October sixth RFP in very piecemeal manners. We know that someone in Brighton Park responded and that we're moving. But we don't know how many other locations throughout the city have taken us up on that offer to house migrants for base camps. We know that we are trying, over, again, the alderman's objection, to put them in at the vacant Jewel on one hundred and fifteenth and Halsted. We know that there are people trying to put them at a vacant Kmart at Seventieth and Pulaski. We know that there are plenty of vacant spots throughout the city of Chicago that none of us know about, that are being considered. We have ordinances that are sitting, I think that were even referred in rules, that say we have to be notified when a shelter's coming our way that's going to house more than twelve people. We don't know. Our communities don't know. And by the time we hear it, we're being told it's too late. The anger that we, that we are feeling from the community isn't because of the migrants, it's because the community has been shut out from this process completely. They've been told that you will hear about it when we're done. We cannot continue down this path, Mr. President. Because as we try to figure out how to address and prevent the human crisis from becoming the human catastrophe that it already is, the opportunity for our lack of planning only grows the cost exponentially. We have a contract for nearly thirty million dollars just for six tents to hold six, seventy-five hundred people. We have thousands more on the way, thousands that are here. We've talked about the thousands of, of the grift that is coming from this, from people trying to take advantage of this situation financially. We need to step back, we need to assess, and we need to plan correctly. Because otherwise, this will be a continuation of an ongoing emergency where more and more money is flying out the door with nothing to show for it within, within our communities other than a tent that can't even keep people warm past forty degrees. Mr. President, I will not be supporting this item. I will be standing with our colleague who has said no for his community. And I think that we need to take this as a broader package back to the committee where it belongs, or even as a committee of the whole, to have a citywide discussion on how to move forward, not just with immigration, but how we take care of those who have been sent here. Have a public discussion on this matter here in this room, as we did before when we brought David Brown right here to say, what are we doing to keep people safe? Now we should have the same conversation here in this chamber, with this body as a whole, to say, what are we doing to keep the migrants safe? What are we, what is our commitment? And what are we willing to do in the meantime in a broader fashion other than just one surprise here, one surprise there, while certain wards have to bear the brunt and other wards bear nothing? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to be recorded as no.
Very good. The chair recognizes Alderman Rosa.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I'm not running for Congress, so I'll keep it brief. If you go to the city of Chicago's website, www.chicago.gov, you can see there a very well-articulated plan as it relates to the city's migrant mission. On the city's website, there's a section on frequently asked questions related to the migrant question. It is very robust, it is very lengthy. All of the questions to any answers that you may have are found there. The plan is one that this city has articulated at a monthly immigration committee hearing, so kudos to Chair Alderman Andre Vasquez for hosting those monthly meetings, which have been very informative. The plan has been articulated at weekly briefings with aldermen. Aldermen that are interested in knowing what the plan is can attend those weekly briefings. And the plan has also been articulated in community meetings. Look, we have to be very honest. Refugee resettlement, migrant resettlement should not be the focus of local government. It was never supposed to be that way. It's supposed to be the focus of federal government. The federal government in this moment is operating zero shelters. The state of Illinois in this moment is operating zero shelters. It is only the city of Chicago that is operating twenty-five shelters, opening one shelter every week since the start of this term. We should be proud of the effort that our city has made, but we also know that it's not enough. We desperately need more support from the federal government. We desperately need more support from the state government. But we're going to continue to do what we can to make sure that we are welcoming people with the, the best way that we possibly can in this moment. So again, I, I think that, you know, if you have questions, there's a frequently asked question, you know, page on the city of Chicago's website. You can go there, you can clearly look at that information. You can also attend the immigration committee hearings. You don't have to be a committee member to attend those hearings, we all know that. The questions are being asked, the questions are being answered, the plan is being clearly articulated. And I will say on this specific site, the plan is very clear. This is a free piece of land. You don't turn down a free piece of land. And this free piece of land will sooner rather than later be the Morgan Commons development, which will be a development for the people of the Morgan Park community to make sure that there is mixed-use, multifamily development there. This will be an asset for the city of Chicago. It will be an asset for the Morgan Park community. And the first step to getting there is accepting this free land. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make mine even shorter. Alderman Mosley was elected to represent his community, he's doing that with a no vote, I support it, I'm also a no.
The Chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Look, I think that we can sit here all day and debate how we feel about the migrant crisis, what we believe is right, what we believe we should be doing, or raising criticisms all day, and I said this the last time, it's super easy to point fingers. That's easy, to point and say, "You're not doing good enough," but I haven't heard anyone propose a real solution. Show me something better. When 30,000 Ukrainians came to the city of Chicago, did we ask the public, "Should we remain a sanctuary city?" We didn't ask those questions. This council didn't even debate much, except that we needed to do everything possible to help resettle them. You see, this is a humanitarian crisis, and it doesn't matter whether we are a sanctuary city or not, those buses will not stop coming. And so, we could debate the question, we could debate with the public, but that's still not gonna help us. We're still not gonna have solutions. There will still be children who are malnourished, who spend months in the desert, who are sleeping on cold floors in the city of Chicago, because asking the question doesn't provide a solution. Man, it's easy to sit here and just say, "We should ask the question, the public should tell us." I agree, there are things that we have to resolve for, there are issues we have to grapple with, we have to respond to the historical disinvestment in our black communities, we have to respond to the fact that we have unhoused Chicagoans that are also gonna have to bear the cold. We have to respond to that. But that doesn't mean we should be anti-immigrant, that doesn't mean we shouldn't be a sanctuary city, that doesn't mean we shouldn't wake up every day and do what we got elected to do, and that is to govern, that is to provide solutions, not to have a soundbite for an interview. We are a state of 1,300 municipalities, and we are the only municipality bearing the brunt. If you wanna find solutions, go have conversations with other mayors and other municipalities, and ask them to have skin in the game. But we're angry at the wrong people, we're sitting here arguing among ourselves, when we're sitting here trying to resolve for the solution, for the problem, as you say. We should be angry at our federal government, who has imposed 150 sanctions on Venezuela that has caused the migration pattern in the first place. For folks who are trying to go to Congress, I hope you try to lift those sanctions when you get there. We have real work to do, and we're sitting here debating the same thing, it's not gonna provide solutions. And so, I ask us to govern. You wanna be mad at somebody, be mad at everyone who has chosen not to have anything to do with this problem. Let's go ask our governor for more help, let's ask our president to lift these sanctions, let's ask for Venezuelans to come with FEMA money the way Ukrainians did, I mean, there's things we can ask for here, there are real things we could be fighting for, but we're wasting time fighting each other, I'll tell you that much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
I would also like to be recorded as a no. Alderman Mosley, you represent the 21st ward, I'm sure you do a good job of that, and that's why the people elected you, and I think we should start listening to the people who represent these communities, so Alderman Mosley, I stand behind you 100%. No.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I am listening to a whole lot of rhetoric going on around here, but what I don't hear is us standing with the Alderman of the 21st ward. The Alderman of the 21st ward says he doesn't want it, other aldermen says they didn't want it, therefore, we should honor the wishes of the Alderman of the 21st ward. Now, people said that there's a plan. Yeah, there is a plan. The plan is to shove it down the 12th ward's throat, the plan is to shove it down the 21st ward's vote's throat, that's the plan, that's the plan. We need to understand that, yes, we all understand this crisis, no doubt, we got that, y'all, but when the crisis is hitting the 21st ward, and then across the street, all of a sudden, they know the migrants coming, Walgreens say, "We out, November 9th, we out," and that's only gonna be the beginning. Now, we say that there's promises that we're gonna redevelop that area, that area's been sitting vacant for over 10 years, almost 12 years. What reassurance that we have is it gonna be redeveloped? Is it in writing, or is it verbal? You need to get it in writing. That way, you can hold it feet to the fire, that they're gonna do something with this land. Now, yeah, I'll tell you what, Jewel's moved out almost 13 years ago, right? They've been paying taxes on that land for 12, 13 years. I give it to you too, so I won't have to pay taxes. I'll give it to you for a dollar, here, take it. Now, you don't have to pay taxes on it. So, let's look at the whole picture about what's going on here, ladies and gentlemen. Let's look at the whole picture. This is gonna be a detriment to the south side of Chicago, and for a community to not have us stand with them, who represents that community, is a travesty in itself, y'all. So, don't fall for the okey-dokey, we've seen the smoke and mirrors before, good luck developing that land. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Tabarez.
I just wanted to say that I also stand with my colleague of the 21st ward on his vote no, so I'd like to be recorded as a no as well. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez. He has left. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having been down to the border and back, the least common denominator is that this is a federal issue. This is an issue in which the president, Congress hasn't figured it out. Word on the street is that the president is coming to Chicago this month. If the president cannot come to Chicago with the federal money needed to fund this crisis caused by a failed Congress, and him figuring it out, I think that Chicago needs to have something to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Seems like it's every time for me, time for me to talk, somebody's in front of me. Thank you, Mr. President. I feel for you, I wouldn't wanna be in your shoes every day what's going on, I'll tell you that, but nonetheless, I'm not against anyone here, but I am with someone, and that's my esteemed colleague from the 21st ward, I stand behind him, just like I'm confident he would stand behind me if I needed his support, so I would also like to be recorded as a no.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I don't often say much, I listen, and, you know, my colleagues say that we shouldn't point fingers, at the same time you throw darts. We have to learn to be mindful of one another. This is just not about us, it's about our community in which we live in. We don't sit here and bicker and argue because I don't wanna sanctuary city, or she does, or he does, I mean, you want me to take a poll right now and ask, "How many of you all have, how many of you all have migrants in your ward right now?" Raise your hand if you have migrants in your ward. So, many of us are hit with this, and so, I'm saying this because I am plagued with my constituents running in my office, saying, "Do you support this? If you support this, then we don't support you." So, it's not like we wanna go against the administration or anyone else in this room, but we have to stand where our voters stand. So, it is about a vote, because our voters look for us to represent them. I am here to represent the 24th ward, and the 24th ward only, but I will stand with my colleagues, if they say no, I have to support them. But it is really about, this is not our, we are in a fight that we haven't been asked to be in, and so, people are running here, and we're, it's pitting us all against each other, and I think that our common goal is to love one another and to take care of one another, that is all our common goal, but things get missed because the Hispanics thinks that they're not being taken care of, the blacks thinks that they're not being taken care of, the, there's issues with our Jewish community, I mean, there's always gonna be a fight, we're always gonna pit each other against one another, but the true, the, why we stand here and why we're in this position, so that we take care of what's best for our wards. I can't speak for everybody else's ward, but I will tell you, this is not something that my community supports, and I do believe that, yeah, I can speak on Mayor Harold Washington and not support the sanctuary city, because my father did a great job with supporting Harold from start to finish. So, I will speak on it, I know the great work that my father did, and sometimes we do things that may not always be right at that particular time, and so, I don't mean that we shouldn't be a sanctuary city, because we should help, but it shouldn't be on the backs of our taxpayers, and right now, we don't have anything but to do that, so I'm asking, I'm asking the black Americans, I'm asking us black folks, you know, we see these people sitting out in the cold, yeah, the easy thing to do, and to say, "Send them back," but they're here, and so, do you just let people sit out in the cold? You know, I would love for that same money to come back to the 24th ward and build affordable housing, build senior housing, build veteran housing, but we're stuck in a situation that, do you let these people die out on the street? At the same time, I mean, this is big, I have to help the people that are in my community, we have to help the people that is under Laura Whacker, we can't refuse all, and I think that if we join the two, I don't think anybody will have a problem with it, but we can't say, "Hey, you're separate, you're separate," because we still have a fight here, and I can't help you because you're black and you're from Chicago, so you can't come and get warm. Everybody should be, this is a fight, if we stop pitting others against one another, I think this can work, but we're pitting each other against each other, we're pitting poor against poor, and that doesn't work. We all have to come together, this is a fight for all humanity right now, and we're stuck in the middle, we're stuck fighting against our community, telling them, "I support you, I have to support the administration," it's too much, this is too much, and the burden is on all of us, and it's like an elephant is in the room, it's okay to speak out, support your community, it's okay to speak out, we know that that exists, and everybody is being quiet, and so, when you lead, you have to lead with transparency, and we're not doing that when we stay silent.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Talia Faro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just rose where I was to speak, Mr. President, and say one simple thing, I support my colleague, and I will be voting no, but more important, I really wanna thank Alder Woman from the 24th ward for her elegant words. Over the last four years, we had a very contentious city council, we did, so much so, Mr. President, that we were sometimes laughable, the public laughed at the way we conducted business in here, and I think, and I say this to my colleagues, I think we could express our opinions and our views without throwing shade at one another. If my colleague wants to run for Congress, I applaud him. But in one sentence, we can't say, "Let's work together," and then throw shade because he's running for Congress. So, let's keep our comments, if we're gonna work together, let's work together, but let's be respectful of one another, because that's why we're here, to put the, to get the business of the people done, and not to throw shade at one another. So, if you support it, you support it, if you don't, you don't, but there's never a need, never a need to attack a colleague in these chambers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sixtia Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and just given the fact that we need more debate on this item, I would like to make a motion to defer and publish this item, along with Alderman Ramirez-Rosso.
The item will be deferred and published.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following negotiated sales and agreements from the Department of Planning and Development are also group for convenience. Item 4, 02023-0005105, negotiated sale with redevelopment agreement of vacant fire station to the Black Fire Brigade Org for development as instruction center for emergency medical services and five firing curriculum for Chicago youth in the 3rd ward. Item number 5, intergovernmental agreement with Chicago Park District to transfer former Robert Jackson Park property at 4319 South Indiana Avenue to city in exchange for replacement land to expand existing parks or for public purpose use in the 3rd ward. Item 6, intergovernmental agreement with Chicago Transit Authority for purchases of various city parcels and easements within several tax incrementing financing, TIF redevelopment project areas between South 95th Street and South 130th Street for the Red Line Extension Project in the 19th and 21st ward. And the number 7 is the sale of vacant as east city-owned property at 4301, 4309, and 4329 West Madison Street to Garfield Park Wellness Support Corporation as part of the collaborative development of Sankofa Wellness Center, joining other private parcels in the 28th ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion.
That can be group for, for enough. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I speak, if anybody wants to come and stand in front of me, please feel free. Okay, thank you. Mr. President, I just want to comment on number 4, and I didn't know it was in your ward, Pat, this, these guys, this Black Fire Brigade, I thought it was in Derek Curtis' ward, I mean, they do wonderful things, or, I'm gonna call them kids, because they're, I know they're teenagers and some young men, but they do so much to help these kids, and unfortunately, it's not enough to help them with the fire department job, because everything's a luck of the draw now, qualifications mean nothing, but this guy, I don't even know his last name, really, I just know him as Q, the guy that runs it, he's just a, he's just an awesome individual, he's a fireman, along with some other firefighters, you know, male and female, and he just do so much great stuff, so I proudly support item number 4, and I just went on to say that.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Nujia. Our apologies. The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Dow.
Yes, thank, I just want to tell my colleagues, his last name is Curtis, Q. Curtis, Quentin Curtis, I'm very proud that they're gonna be locating or will be staying in the ward, and, Mr. President, I just wanted to use the opportunity to say that I hope during your four years here, that we look more closely at ways to get more African-American firefighters into the, into the police department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Chair has moved her to pass the same roll call of the previously applied, item number 1, the finance, as well as the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider, if there are no other hands, those items are approved, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finally, the Department of Housing presented their 2023 Q2 report for the five-year housing plan to the committee where no vote was taken. Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Very much, thank you. Is there a report on the committee on workforce development? There is no committee. Thank you very much. That concludes all of our committee reports, then, thank you all very much. So, on the agreed-upon calendar, matters on the agreed-upon calendar, the Chair recognizes Alder Woman Harris.
Thank you. I received from Clerk Anna M. Valencia a total of 95 items proposed of the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory commemorative and tributary resolutions from Clerk Valencia from the following alderpersons. Alder Person Hall, Alder Person Harris, Alder Person Quinn, Alder Person Coleman, Alder Person Curtis, Alder Person Tabarez, Alder Person Fuentes, Alder Person Evans, Alder Person Conway, Alder Person Spazaro, Alder Person Lawson, Alder Person Gardner, Alder Person Manna Hoppenworth, and I move these in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you very much. Now for new business, the Clerk will call the wards this month, this meeting beginning with the 50th.
Zoning ordinance amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, and exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almond Martin has proposed order to call on the Chicago Police Department to conduct workforce allocation study with a third-party vendor for staffing deployment and assignment allocation study with a third-party vendor for staffing deployment and assignment decisions, which is referred to the Committee on Police and Fire. Alderman Riley has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at various locations, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Vasquez has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of North Lincoln Avenue, and four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to disallow additional package good licenses on portion of North Lincoln Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Vasquez and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of the twenty-twenty-four budget recommendations regarding wage allowance for automatic ward staff, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Two committees call, the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations and the Committee on Committees and Rules. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Vasquez and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code at section two dash eight dash zero fifty by modifying annual automatic expense allowances based on rate of inflation as determined by the Consumer Price Index, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Vasquez has proposed resolution to call for hearings by the Illinois General Assembly to amend the Open Meetings Act to allow hybrid city council committee meetings, which is referred, which is referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Two committees been called, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development and the Committee on Committees and Rules. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Villegas has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, chapter two dash ninety-two, by modifying section two dash ninety-two dash zero seventy to include definition of key performance indicators for measure, for measuring cities procurement process and certification-eligible business participation programs, and by adding a new section two dash ninety-two dash one hundred entitled Procurement Accountability, which is referred to the Committee on Contracting Oversight. Alderman Villegas also has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development for the year twenty-twenty-three, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Conway has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code at section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to disallow additional package good licenses on portion of North LaSalle Street and West Madison Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez has proposed resolution to call on U.S. President Biden to call for and facilitate peace in the Middle East and to provide for increased humanitarian assistance, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. I'm sorry, Alderman, I didn't hear you. Two committees have been called, the Committee on Health and the Committee on Public Safety. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Cruz has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional package good licenses on portion of West Belmont Avenue and North Laramie Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Telafiero has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, title seventeen, by modifying various sections and adding a new section seventeen dash nine dash zero one three zero regarding indoor event venues, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Telafiero also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section two dash one fifty-two dash four ten, by modifying mandatory retirement age for police officers and firefighter, which is referred to the Committee on Police and Fire. Alderman Burnett has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section seventeen dash four dash zero four zero four, by modifying subsection seventeen dash four dash zero four zero four B regarding minimum lot area per unit reductions for certain area districts, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Burnett also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at eight hundred West Fulton Market, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Burnett also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional package good licenses on portions of West Grand Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Fuentes and others have proposed resolution to call on U.S. Congress to clarify U.S. tax code to prevent misuse of Puerto Rican tax incentives and to address, and to address negative economic impact on the people of Puerto Rico, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Rodriguez has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at thirty-three fifteen West Twenty-Sixth Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Rodriguez also has proposed resolution for support of updates to Office of Budget and Management's Uniform Guidance, which is referred to the Committee on Workforce Development. Alderman Lee has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at thirty-two oh seven South Halsted Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Mitchell has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at twenty-four twenty-five East Seventy-First Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Hall has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Titus Allen Senior Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Hall also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Mimi Till Mobley Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Robinson and Alderman Dow have proposed resolution for submission of a public question by referendum to Chicago voters at the March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four election regarding renaming of Douglas Community Area in honor of Frederick Douglas, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Hopkins has proposed ordinance for transfer of funds within the Committee on Public Safety for the year twenty-twenty-three. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of automatic introductions.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, approval of the journals. Alderman Mitchell?
Mr. President, I am not aware of any corrections to the journals from the October eleventh, twenty-twenty-three special meeting, the October eleventh, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting, the October thirteen, twenty-twenty-three special meeting, or the October sixteen, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting. I move that it be approved.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. For unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I'm aware of one piece of unfinished business. It was filed by Alderman Lopez and calls for a vote on SO two zero two three zero 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 two nine nine zero, which was deferred and published on October fourth, twenty-twenty-three.
Very good. Thank you much. Uh, the chair recognizes Alderwoman Sam Nujan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to re-refer this to the Committee on Transportation for further consideration.
All right, there's been a motion, um, on the floor. Okay, there's been a motion, uh, to re-refer this to committee, and the chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
I move to lay that motion on the table.
Very well. So there is a motion on the floor to lay Alderwoman Sam Nujan's motion to re-refer to committee on the table. The chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Mr. President, just for a point of information, um, we did get the, the number for the ordinance, but could someone refresh our memory on what the item actually is substantively?
I would absolutely do that. The chair recognizes the sponsor, Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The item being, the item in question is substitute ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero 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 two nine 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 zero, which deals with the addition of new terminology in the municipal code with regards to public libraries, which allows for their existence, codification, and permitting on the public way.
Could, could you, just a second, could you just clarify that a little bit more? Uh, when you say libraries, you're referring to, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but just to Alderman Riley's point, we just want to make sure that we're absolutely clear what this item is.
These, this is in reference to the public bookcases, which are put on public way, city property. The ordinance, which was crafted with the Law Department and myself, allows for their permitting and existence on the public way through a free permit.
Okay, so there are a few folks who have their hands up. The chair, I'll come back to you, but the, the chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Speaking for further clarification to your point, Alderman Riley. So again, like this is in a lot of our neighborhoods, we have residents who, out of the kindness and generosity of their hearts, put out free books.
This is just for clarification. This is not for debate.
Clarification of the ordinance, of course, sir.
Just for, just hold, hold on a second, please, direct here.
Sir, the, the question was.
Hold on a second, please. Alderman Riley asked for clarification. The sponsor offered clarification of the substance of the ordinance. If you are speaking, you are speaking to the clarification of the substance of the ordinance, we're not debating it.
One hundred percent.
Very well, please continue.
So let's speak to that. So it does define, as I'm only gonna read from the ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Defines a public bookcase as a freestanding permanent structure on the sidewalk or parkway. We're familiar with these. Erected for free exchange and storage of books. It goes on to say that these items would not be permissible. Uh, it says, uh, letter B, it shall be unlawful for any person to construct, install, or maintain any of the following on or above the public way without a public way permit. Uh, number eleven, it adds, public bookcase, all of this, I, I could personally understand, and I won't argue it. But then it also notes, this is ten twenty-eight, one twenty-five, only organizations, not-for-profits, entities, and licensed businesses are eligible for public way permits for public bookcases.
Thank you, Alderman Laspada, for clarifying the clarity. Are there any other alders that require more clarification of the substance of this ordinance? The chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
So I, I just want to make sure we're all clear. So based on the description from Alderman Laspada, we're talking about the little free libraries that we see throughout the city. Is that correct?
You're directing, that is, that is correct.
Insurance for these things. Okay, uh, that, that helps very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you very much. So there's a motion on the floor to lay Alderwoman Sam Nujan's, uh, motion, which is to re-refer this, um, on the floor. Uh, uh, there's, to lay it on the table. Thank you very much. And so as we prepare to vote, just for clarity, the motion to lay it on the table means if you vote yes to lay this on the table, you wish to proceed to, to, to have immediate consideration, which still would require a vote. If you vote no, um, you wish to proceed with the initial motion, which was to refer this item to committee. Is everyone clear about the substance of the ordinance, as well as the motion that's on the table, to lay Alderwoman Nujan's motion on the table? It's a lot easier to play uno in the black community, isn't it? Madam Clerk?
The voting is now open. Please refresh your device. Voting is now open. I will now take a voice vote for those that did not vote on the E device. Alderman Curtis.
No.
Alderman Curtis is a no. Alderman Moore? Not in chambers. Alderwoman Taylor. Alderwoman Taylor. Alderman Burnett?
No.
Alderman Burnett is a no. Alderman Cardona? Not in chambers. Alderman Spazado? Alderman Spazado is a no. Alderwoman Silverstein?
No.
Alderman Silverstein is a no. And then Alderwoman Taylor, are you there? All right, the voting is now closed.
There are forty-two nays, there are five yays. The motion to lay the motion that Alderman Nujan to re-refer this item to committee has failed. So to the motion, all those in favor to refer this item, item SO two zero two three dash zero 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 two nine nine zero, do committee signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The item has been re-refere. Thank you all very much. And now, Alderman Mitchell, are you aware of any other further unfinished business?
Mr. President, I am not aware of any further unfinished business.
Thank you very much. What about miscellaneous business? Alderman Mitchell?
Except for the ordinance setting the date and the time for the next meeting, I'm not aware of any unfinished, miscellaneous business.
Very well, considering the date and time of the next meeting, Alderman Mitchell?
I handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and the time for the next meeting.
Very much, thank you for doing that. Uh, Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Be ordained by the City Council of City of Chicago, section one, the next regular meeting of the City Council of City of Chicago shall be held on Tuesday, November seventh, twenty-twenty-three, beginning at eleven a.m. in the Council Chamber on the second floor in City Hall, one twenty-one North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. Section two, this order shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage. Gregory Mitchell, Alderman, seventh ward.
Very well, thank you very much. Um, Alderman Mitchell, for the passage?
I move the matters and the honors to be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Uh, for the reading of the, the ordinance for the next time and date, hearing no objections, so ordered, um, for the omnibus roll call, the chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell. I got you. So we just moved to pass the date and time for the next meeting. We just did that. And so now for the omnibus roll call.
Yeah. I move that the matters and the honors to be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Very well, thank you. Hearing no objections, so ordered. And then finally, Alderman Mitchell, on a motion to adjourn. Whoa, whoa, oh, I'm sorry. Um, I do apologize here. We have a public hearing on the proposed budget. Uh, the chair recognizes, um, for this moment, I understand there are a couple of speakers, but the chair recognizes, um, Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. President. Uh, as we prepared to go for our, uh, public hearing on the budget, um, thank you, um, move that we go out of the regular order of business in order to conduct a public hearing on the proposed executive budget.
Very well. On the motion to go out of the regular order of business, all of those in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? This motion passes. The time is now, uh, for the clerk to read the notice of the public hearing. Oh, what time is it? One forty-eight? Yeah.
The following official notice of a public hearing on the budget document of the City of Chicago, the city of the year twenty-twenty-four, was published in the Chicago Tribune on October twenty-four, twenty-twenty-three. Public notice is hereby given that the executive budget of the City of Chicago for fiscal year beginning January first, twenty-twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, was received in the office of City Clerk from Mayor Brandon Johnson, October eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, and was submitted by the Honorable Brandon Johnson, Mayor, to City Council, City of Chicago, and a special city council meeting held on October eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. The budget document is in a paper form and available for inspection in the office of City Clerk. Public notice is hereby further given that a public hearing on the executive budget will be held on Wednesday, November first, twenty-twenty-three, at eleven thirty a.m. in the City Council Chamber and City Hall. Instructions for public participation are posted online at www.chicityclerk.com. If you acquire specific language combinations, including ASL interpreting, please email communityengagement@cityofchicago.org by October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three, dated at Chicago, Illinois, dated at Chicago, Illinois, the twenty-fourth day of October twenty-twenty-three. Andrea M. Valencia, City Clerk, City of Chicago.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We have a couple of s- So we are waiting on the American, yeah, the American Sign Language interpreter. And so before I proceed, could we stand at recess for just a couple of minutes, perhaps five minutes, just to get our American Sign Linguizer to set up? Thank you.